I'd like to call the planning commission meeting to order. Most members are present. We do have one absence today. We have established quorum. I do need to administer the oath to anyone that either is speaking on the cases or plans on speaking at all during today's meeting other than commissioners to swear to. I hope again. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission? I have to say I do.
I do.
All right, thank you. Dispositions of our meeting minutes from the last meeting. It's been a long time in the making.
So...
It was June 6th.
There's two over here.
Oh, yeah.
June 6th, let's see, I think.
Yeah, because I thought it was in August.
Okay, I really accept the minutes. It looks like this...I was here, you, Nicholas and Paula.
Yeah.
For June 6th. I was not here for August 15th. So we need to separate those out.
Okay.
I would second the motion to approve the minutes for the June 6th.
All right. All those favoring the June 6th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's move on to August 15th. I had not seen any issue with these in my review.
Is that a motion? I'll second it. I'll move we accept the minutes of August 15th.
I'll second it then, okay. Thank you. All those favor of accepting the August 15th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All right. In opposition, I accept. All right, move into today's casework. We have number 1205. I say that as if we have a slate of cases, but really we just have one case on there, so don't anyone fear that. Case number 1205 is 152 and 154 Mill Street. This was brought to the commission beforehand in preliminary discussion and today it is a case. It's number 152 Mill Street, as I said, is being brought forth by RBC Architects as the representative on the project and is a Title 41 Site Plan Review. We'll begin with that. If John or Paul would like to give us a brief summary, as you do so well, I'd appreciate it.
It's been so long ago. If you remember, this was a 18-bed, 6-unit complex in both the 152 and 154 Mill Street. The project met most of our requirements. Last time it was heard, hard zoning, setbacks, height, coverage, et cetera, et cetera. They did go through the shade tree commission and we did get that worked out, so a few things needed to be done there. And a couple of the items that we recently tabled last time, there was some issues in regards to whether the building was going to be elevated and how stormwater was going to work, as well as the dumpster trash situation where it was going to go and the shade tree situation. So the biggest issue, I believe, was probably the storm drainage situation.
Correct.
And myself and Andy Stone, Director of Inherent Public Works, we went out to the site last week and went through it and did some planning. And Andy has given me a memo this morning that I have even copied to you up there in reference to his opinion on this and what their proposals are now in regards to stormwater management. If you'd like, I can read it.
Yeah, if you could go to get to basically the conditions that Andy Stone wanted to, that'd be fun.
Well, we can just state that they discussed creating a dry well in a landscaped area behind a proposed parking lot in lieu of a storm sewer tie-in. Given that the impermeable area, the new plan will actually be smaller than the impermeable area of conditions at present, we currently do not experience stormwater problems at this location. Find this proposal acceptable if it meets the following conditions. One, the dry well he proposes is properly designed in accordance with the High Department Natural Resources Rainwater and Land Development Manual 2006 Edition as shown in his final plans. He should utilize the Athens County Soil and Water Conservation District for technical advice on a rain garden or similar feature. Two, the rear parking area be revised and arranged differently so the 36-inch trunk diameter pin oak tree currently identified for removal instead remains and is incorporated into the rain garden noted in item 1 above. This very large shade tree is healthy and will be very effective in absorbing stormwater. And I may add that the shade tree commission, I can read a note from them that I was looking at earlier. Their minutes, it was noted that the large shade tree that will be cut down on the site owing to this needs of this project is a loss to the city tree canopy. The trees planted for this project were not likely to be as big as the one that is being removed when this site comes up for redevelopment 20 to 30 years' time. This is a problem not addressed by Title 37. So even though they approved the plan with the land of the shade tree with new trees, there was their preference that this tree try to remain as well. And I think that we've worked this out, that that could possibly or probably happen. And Mr. Valentour has done some new drawings here to show that that tree can hopefully remain and we can work this all out.
Okay. Valentour, if you could bring those forward, I appreciate it.
All we did here was revise the parking lot a little bit and I trimmed the drip one of the tree.
Yeah, just a few, I appreciate it.
Does this affect your parking at all?
Does it what?
Affect the parking?
It relays it out a little bit differently, yes.
But not number of spaces or anything?
Number of spaces right now, we just calculated. At this time, it's still one short, but I feel confident something can be worked out. I think that we look at it.
I didn't know that it was one short before.
Before, it was adequate.
Correct.
Now, with leaving the tree, we're one space short.
I think that's a pretty good compromise there, don't you?
That's...
Well, technically Title 41 here basically has to fit the plan.
Right.
So it's either inadequate for stormwater drainage or inadequate for parking. Is that what I'm hearing? In terms of total percentage, what are we...I think it was coverage was 57% and the max is 60. Did that go down?
Total was 57% before and we're 60 is allowed.
And what is it now with this indication?
I just got this, so I don't know.
What, was it before then?
We didn't change that. We tried to keep the same ratio of clot coverage as much as we could.
It should be.
That's why we lost one spot.
Parking's...I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner.
I'm sorry, excuse me, but like John indicated, if we could just bend the rules a tiny little bit in terms of the size of a space and call a compact car space or something, we could probably accommodate the 18 cars, but just not with a 20 by 10 or 200 square foot parking spot, which...
180.
180, I'm sorry. 10, 9 by 18, or 9 by 10.
9 by 20, 10 by 10.
Yeah.
With these changes, can I also note here on the staff review, has a dumpster and a bicycle site been determined?
Yes.
Go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, but on the drawings that were submitted, we put the proper number of trash receptacles enclosed.
I think you said eight, was it?
I needed two 30 gallon cans per each unit, which makes, well, 12 30 gallon trash containers. And for the bicycles, we modified the underground parking area to accommodate bicycles, as well as have a little spot outside them to also be racked. You know, and as John indicated, Andy Stone, it wasn't just storm drainage, it was a lot of things. If you look at his original letter that he wrote about just site utilities and everything else, because of all the work that had just recently been done on Mill Street, he was concerned about what was going to happen. So we actually hired a civil engineer and as part of this submission, you know, we showed all the design connections for all the utilities, which was not on our first submission. But it's much more detailed in terms of how the actual connections and where they're going to be made, as well as all the elevations and details associated with that, as well as all the grading. That's why we determined we can't get in the storm sewer.
All right.
All the grades that we took from all over the property, from adjacent properties to determine the flow of water around the site and where things are going. So we did a lot of work trying to accommodate Andy in terms of the utilities that this project is going to affect.
It wasn't just accommodating Andy, it's the fact that we did just go through there and didn't major upgrade, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, it was his response that generated all this information being gathered.
Okay, so the plans you've got there, the ones dated revised August 27th, 2012?
Yes.
Okay.
27th.
27th, sorry.
How can you read that?
Would you like larger copies?
Near side, I take my glasses off.
He has larger copies up here.
There's these. If you'd like larger copies, I have them here.
Then there was also from the police chief asking about lighting to this that's shown.
We are...I think the parking lot will be lit off the building, essentially. We'll use wall backs.
Yeah.
Beaters pointed downward.
Right. Not in somebody's bedroom, right.
Is this the only one or is it...
No.
Okay, why don't you pass one over there, we'll share.
It's out there.
Fencing's all shown on the site drawings.
No fence. Stormwater flood vents.
The whole back is open.
Bicycle racks. Point of this should be in the heat circle. She's seven. You'll see eight. Oh, all the way back there, okay.
I just, I don't understand.
And the garbage trash receptacle closure, similar to fence detail in B. The sheet five-foot tall fence with swinging gates, parking lot side enclosure.
Will there be a...
Go ahead.
Will there be a curb in the backyard to keep people from parking in the grass long in there or...
We probably will have...well, no. I can't...I have the sheet drain off into that...that's where my...I'll have curb, I'll have bumper blocks on that parking lot.
Bumper blocks, okay.
But we will not have a curb.
Okay, bumper blocks.
Okay, so looking at this detail, now that I've got the large version, this is page SD2. The hexagon shaped codes, number codes says three, number three says trash receptacle enclosure, similar to fence detail in B. This sheet is five-foot tall, swinging gates, parking lot side enclosure to hold eight 30-gallon receptacles minimum. Is that...do you need 12? Is that going to fit 12?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, Paul.
Oh, okay. How many garbage receptacles are you going to put for 18 beds?
We're going to have eight, what's it, per apartment, I believe it was. Was it two per apartment?
Two per apartment.
And there were six.
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. This says eight.
That was not changed, because I modified the actual drawing to indicate 12.
Okay.
Where'd you read that note, please?
SD2, page...this blueprint SD2, the hexagon shape number three, that says a minimum of eight 30-gallon...I guess you could fit eight in there. I'm just looking at the blueprint there, it doesn't...I don't know how the size of those gallon things look like.
All right, so right now what we're looking at as far as variances are concerned would be the setback is not being met on the front, as well as...yeah, it just looks like the front setback is not being met and then the parking space requirements are not being met.
Well, the front setback technically is 25 foot, but our code does allow for an established front setback of the buildings on either side of it, and that's where he's at.
Okay, so that's where the 20...so what's the exceeding other buildings setback? Got you.
Could you give me the citation on that, please, John?
On the established setback?
Yeah, not right now, but eventually.
Yes.
Please.
Actually.
Mind you, it might be the front setback, but it's certainly going to be a lot taller than the other buildings.
Right. And then I want...I guess I didn't notice this before, but 1 and 3 Hawking Street, which is a very narrow street, I remember it for a number of reasons, fire and so on. They butt right up against the parking lot. Is that currently in place, that way?
I'm sorry.
1 and 3 parking lot. 1 and 3 has no setback whatsoever. Where do those cars park? Is that the way it is already? I mean, we allowed that at some earlier time.
Hawking.
Yeah, on Hawking Street.
1 and 3.
1 and 3.
Are those also owned by Golliano?
I don't know.
I mean, not that you would have to know, I just wonder. It seems that, I guess, any kind of change in those two properties would be precluded by this, probably.
Where does 140 Mill Street park? Was that...
Behind.
Behind.
Press that one, good-looking building on the street.
I can't imagine there's sufficient parking.
There's not enough garbage space. And there's sure it's parking, yeah. You know, I would also, while they're all looking, say that one reason why I was happy we hired an engineer is to have someone looking out for our interests, Mr. Valentour. I mean, you know, you have your set of interests, we have our...I mean, the people have a set too. And so we appreciate that he did adjust a bit for you, but he better not adjust too much or he'll be in trouble with me. Okay?
Okay.
How deep is that storm sewer? Last question.
Which one?
The one that you're having trouble connecting to.
I've got all the inverts over on this other sheet here, I think it's somewhere. The invert is at 632.2 of that storm sewer, whereas the elevation grade at the street is 635 right now. Now, we were originally looking to go down towards Elliott as being a better connection point.
Where it's really deep.
But that turned out to be worse in terms of getting down to the elevation necessary.
Okay.
You know, this is all going to be set up, so if ever there is a...I mean, and we originally were trying to tie it into a storm line that was going technically down Mill Street, but were informed that it's a phantom storm line.
It goes behind, in that right-of-way, between the Catholic Church and the center. That's where part of it is, yeah.
When I worked up on other properties here with Whitmore, we tied into that storm line from his property down the right-of-ways to get to that storm line. But since then, an awful lot of work was done all the way down the church street there. What, Stewart, not Stewart?
50, I mean, $500,000 at least, I think we paid to do that from uptown.
But you know, everything we're doing can eventually, if there's something done, we can easily accommodate it by tying into it in the future, just like everybody else in the neighborhood would be expected to do.
He indeed has the same engineer who designed the Mill Street project, at least for sanitary, so.
And that's what we were mainly repairing.
Yeah, I mean, these guys knew exactly what we were looking to do, so they did all the work for you on the Mill Street expansion or renovations anyway, so.
Yeah, we paid for it.
And since that point, I hired them on two other jobs. They're...I've decided that since this is going to be a common thing, and it's a good thing, without a doubt, we hired them on the Stimson Avenue project and we hired them on the Gator project uptown, I mean, to do the same thing, was make the connections with the city utilities.
I mean, can't, I guess, could a spot just be added to the parking lot in the south direction at the entrance there? Do you think there's space for even a compact one there?
That's what I'm thinking. I could get, and John and I discussed this prior to your meeting, that we could get two out of one there.
Right.
And make it work. They would probably be 100% in conformance with the...
Because it doesn't seem like it would, you know, doesn't go into the right-of-way, and I think you're permitted to be in there right-of-way and parking.
You can't be...the parking space cannot come in front of the front setback of the structure.
Okay, so that's the rule. Yeah, but it seems like you got a little more space too on the, where you got the radius there at the end, that you might be able to...
Here's a tree.
I don't know, I'm not sure what are...where, you know, compact, if you can redefine the size of the space is where...
Yeah.
I mean, it even looks like, I mean, I don't know, I'd have to look at the bigger one. Seems like you might even be able to fit, if you just adjust it up there, you might be able to fit a full spot.
Which one are you looking at?
Um, yeah, because if this is your setup, it seems like this is going to make a slight adjustment.
I think that's where, if you looked at the other drawings, that's where the trash is coming from, isn't it?
Oh, is that the trash area?
Yeah, take a look at the SD1, 2.
Maybe that's where.
I've got a few on the SD2. Here, pull it out here. Yeah, here's the bigger one right here. If I'm looking at this, this is the number 3. Yeah. I mean, they're going to walk away here, but you're going to fence this off according to this detail. And again, we need adequate space for that, just because you're talking about 18 beds.
I have to agree with Nicholas, though. We don't, you know, saving that tree that serves the stormwater is critical.
Excuse me.
So ultimately, is a variance required?
Well, that's where I was going to go. We can let Mr. Valentour draw up a plan and show me the 18 spaces and make it a condition, and if it eats it, you know, then we go forward, and if he doesn't, we just send him to BZA.
Well, we're just not permitted to grant variances in our...
And I heard the bending, and we can't really do that, so.
The what?
When you said if we could just bend a little bit, I mean, it's either there or it's not, so that's what we need to find out.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what you, Mr. Valentour, you'd have to do is just show, show it with 18, show that it, you know, either A, it works, or B, it doesn't work, or show, you know, probably one where you got all the full size.
Yeah, but I've done that, I just cut down the tree to get it.
Then you don't meet the city engineer's requirements.
Yeah, that's the problem. I mean, I think it's a persuasive argument to not meet the parking requirements by saving that tree and the effect that it has, that the BZA would probably go with it, but I just, we're not allowed to, you know, pass it along without, you know, we could say if it gets the variance. We can, in other words, you wouldn't have to come back here, say if we could hold a vote, and if the vote could pass, that you, as long as you receive the variances, then the project can proceed, you would not have to come back to our commission.
Okay, at least, all right.
The only way...
If I can't work it out with you, if I can't, then I'm...
If you can't go either.
BZA, I can't believe it.
I may throw it, I feel comfortable, he can work it out to get 18 spaces in here.
Are you thinking side yard on the...
You got that side, you can, you know, I don't want to design it for them, but...
I could do that.
Actually, I think he'd be happy if you just did.
If you say, tell them what to do. Save the tree, then you could probably get rid of this other tree. I hate to even say that. The only thing I would like to see in order for me to go along with it, other than, I would like to make sure that it is stipulated that in the spirit of what our engineers suggested, that you do put that circle around that tree. That you put the circle with the splits around the tree. I mean, just that, so if I walk across there someday and see it's not there, who do I go after? I mean, there's so many slips between the cup and the lip, to use an old cliche, and I just want to make sure those...
Well, you know, there is going to be a lot of...
People will be parking in it, John, you know that as well as I do.
I know. There's a lot of construction activity going to occur here, and there's no guarantee that, you know, obviously, we could harm the tree. I mean, not on, just by doing the work we're going to do around it. But like, these guys have brought up, it's already paved all the way around it right now, so.
Right, yeah.
To make it better.
I mean, as long as it's roped off during construction, of the building itself, you'll be fine.
I understand. Obviously, this is a precondition to getting this approved, so we're going to try to make every effort possible.
And then your parking space may be easier.
To accommodate it. And we've done this before. We've built around trees, trying to save them. It's not something we don't think is a good idea.
Seems like you got a, you could put the parking spot there on the side of the building.
Well, that's what he was just saying.
It's not that usable, but we can't really rule on that.
It's okay.
Is it accessible?
It's accessible, it's just, you know, it's definitely the compact car, it's the right size, but you just got, you got a building on one side. It's just like having a car on the other side, right? You should be careful.
I think we're fine.
I think so, too.
You can't move it forward, right? The house, you can't move the whole structure building?
About the building? I could, but I was trying not to.
I know, I understand, I just was asking the question.
I was trying to make it back as far as I could off the street.
I agree, that's a good idea.
Suppose you're given a size that you're going to end up with, three stories plus?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that side spot's your quickest bet to effectively get the number of spots. Any other comments?
To show 18 spaces and comply with the engineer on the drywall, or...
That's how I would put forward the motion, is that, you know, here's, I'll put it forward and you can reject it, I guess. I move that we accept the Mill Street design with the conditions that the, of Andy Stone's, the Director of Public Works, letter I met, that 18 spaces are provided in the final plans. 18 standard spaces.
May I add to that? The drawings do not show flood vents per Athens City Code Title 25. That's a minor issue. I can, I've already informed Mr. Valentour that those will be needed on the section of it. If we can just add that as a condition to make sure it's on the record, that flood vents...
And that just needs to be on the final plans, on the final engineered plans, right?
Yes, yeah.
Not...
They will have to do a flood hazard application at the time, some of the footprints.
Right. All right, that's my motion. I would not want to bring in the, and then they have, I mean, we can do that, but I don't think it's an either-or of saying, or you have to get a variance for the BZA. I think we'll just go with that direction, so.
I will second that.
All right.
So the conditions, what we're talking about, is that there won't be a variance needed, that they will find 18 spaces, that there will be a dry well or water runoff and a tree will be in place.
Right, and that the final engineer drawings will show the flood vents as well.
And I think also the spirit of what the, in the release that the engineer gave would be that those buttons appear and stay around the tree. Those, what do you call them, curbs? Things I always forget, reassign.
Parking bumpers.
Parking bumpers, yeah. I mean, I think it's...
Brick retaining.
So that there be bumpers on each side of the spaces surrounding it.
We've got them detailed, I just don't have them.
Yeah.
Okay, we just want to make sure it's there.
And that would be another condition on the final plans.
Correct.
Okay.
It's turned into lumber.
But I don't own the drawings.
All right. I have full faith and confidence. Any, so second that, still, all right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting case number 1205 with the conditions brought forward in the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any further discussion on that case 1205? All right, we thank everyone for participating in that one. There are no more cases on the agenda. We do have a communications, it's for a pre-application for Monticello Towers, a co-location on an existing communication tower. Let's see, I think there was a packet, looks like it was provided, here a small one. I don't know if John or Paul, when you put this together?
Fairwood.
Exhibit B. This was brought forward at our attention, I believe, the August 15th meeting. In the minutes of that, they were asking to co-locate an existing tower of new equipment. I was concerned about screening, whether, you know, if you do any sort of new building at this site, if that would therefore, like any building permit, then you have to do it according to code, and it did not appear that the screen was adequate for the site already based on the new wireless communications code. The other item that was... The other item that was brought to the attention was the, basically, this was doing one, I think there was one other item where it wasn't on a public gridway, correct? It was a private one, and I think we request an explanation why number one could not be met.
Yes, one of the items in our ordinance is forty-three point oh eight, narrative should be given to us if, explaining what priority it is. And in our section of code forty-three oh eight, priority one would be, we'd want them on city-owned towers, and if it wasn't, then to explain to us why they're proceeding elsewhere. And I have informed the applicants of that, and I believe they prepare you a narrative that you should have in front of you, and that I would let them read to you or explain to you.
All right, so, all right, without further ado, either the applicants would like to speak, and again, just state your name for the record, I appreciate it.
Jeff Thompson.
Okay.
Basically, what we have here is a situation where this, a lot of times, a cell company will come before you, seeking a coverage solution. This is actually what we call capacity, where we have existing antennas that are at capacity, and we're trying to relieve pressure on those, on those facilities. So if you look at the second page, there's a map there, and we've got two existing facilities named thirty-nine fifty-five and thirty-nine forty-five. Those are the two where we're trying to relieve capacity. So we kind of have to get in between them with the site, and get it high enough in terms of elevation, so we can shoot back into the city. And that's, that's where we're trying to relieve capacity, is in the city, basically. And so AT&T's radio frequency engineers basically designed what we call a search ring, and that's that ring that you see around thirty-nine sixty-nine, which is our proposed location. We searched the area, and basically came up with three candidates, and this area is really, it's very specific, I think it's a quarter-mile radius or something like that, in order for it to work technically for the radio frequency engineers. And we came up with two raw land sites and a co-location, and it's always AT&T's policy to try and co-locate whenever possible, as opposed to building a new tower. So that's what we've done here. I believe that's your second priority, it's a, it's a.
Right.
Existing tower, but it's not on city-owned property.
So you came, the explanation is, you came about this location by chance, based on relieving the pressure here, and it so happened there was a tower that you could co-locate at it?
It's not really by chance.
That's what I'm saying, so you started by looking at that tower and then finding an, any area.
No, we started out with the search ring.
Okay, yeah, but how does the search, what I'm not grasping is, how does the search ring end up being where a tower's at?
That, that is by chance.
Okay, that's just sort of uncanny. Okay, that's, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I was just curious how that, all right, so they, you found the spot that you needed to basically take off pressure from the existing towers.
Correct.
This was the location where you need to do that, and.
Yes.
Because the policy in your organization is to co-locate, there's a tower there and you would co-locate regardless whether it was public or private, so.
Right.
I mean, I feel like that's a pretty clear explanation why it was not a public tower, but, so would the all likelihood have been, though, if there was no tower in that location, we would, you would have not co-located at all, you would have just?
We would have built a new tower.
Would have requested a, okay. Just wanted to see, good.
I'm all about not building another tower, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Co-location was part of the whole point of that.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to figure out, okay. I feel like that satisfies the, why number two is chosen, and again, I mean, we have to prioritize and find out why the earlier ones could not be met. The other item was the screening, and I'm not sure if this is, discusses that or not, does not.
I remember the screening had, actually, you have two sets of fence, you have one fence that screens it off from the apartment complex, and then you have one around the actual base of the tower. If my, I think we had pictures of that last time, right?
Yeah.
It did, yes.
Okay, so in theory, that it is screened from general residential apartments.
Right, okay, and that's the screen that matters, the other one's more of just a security one.
Yeah.
Okay, then that probably was satisfied, then, too.
There's foliage that screens it, I was observing it last week jogging on the bike path, and there's a clear preponderance of foliage that's.
Right.
Screens the base from, from site from the River Valley.
Okay.
At least from that position.
Okay, is there, I guess, comments from other commissioners, or maybe other items that you'd like to bring forward that you think may be critical to bring to our attention before proceeding with an application for the project? I mean, those are, were the two big ones that jumped out to us when we did our initial review.
Yeah, Ed Block.
Okay.
My name.
Thank you.
Engineer, a civil engineer, not radio frequency. Yeah, our plan here is, due to the fact the compound's already maxed out with buildings and radio cabinets inside there, the plan was to expand the compound, but we're also matching the existing, I believe it's more like a stockade-type fence around it.
Right, okay.
We would match that, not necessarily most attractive, but as he was indicating, too, we're, this site is backed up against a hillside, and probably half of it are better, you've got trees and hills up behind it, so.
Right.
We're doing our best as far as trying to match what's already out there.
How do you, just for my information, how does it, do you lease the space that the building sits as well, and then the, some sort of arrangement with the co-locating on the tower, or is it?
Correct.
So that, that building?
We enter into a long-term lease.
Okay, so the building is yours, and the, you just have a long-term lease, so it's, there's not like something can happen where it comes.
Running space.
Okay.
How big a footprint are you expanding that stockade fence, I think you said?
Sheet three. If you have that up there in front of you.
I don't think so.
It's in this pocket.
Oh, it is, okay.
Oh, it's in the back?
Yeah, in the back.
Oh, sorry.
Due to the fact that the equipment shelter is roughly twelve by twenty-eight, and getting clearance around it because of air conditioners, doorways, exhaust hoods, we're expanding the compound roughly by, I'm going to say seventeen and a half by forty-three and a half, forty-two and a half.
Okay.
And this shelter actually has a generator, a backup generator within it, self-contained, so.
This'll be a new one?
New generator, yeah.
Because some of us went through that Durais Show event and didn't have, had some pretty spotty cell service for a while there.
The compound has one in there currently, but that's obviously for whoever designed that, as part of their, in their shelter, now we didn't have them for, so this makes it nice and neat-looking.
It's nice to see all these different names co-located here.
Yes, the tower, there's a structural analysis that's done on the tower, anytime we do a lot of that, we didn't do this, well, actually, I think we did do this one. So we make sure, per code, it can support whatever's being added to it, as far as the antennas and the lines, and if, sometimes there's, and I believe this one might have some modifications to the tower, in other words, a larger member-sized diagonal bracing or something is added to it, but that's, like I said, we've already ran that. When we submit for building permit, that'll be part of the submittal package to show that we've investigated that as well.
Does that, is it just a coaxial that ties into your antenna?
The antennas on the sheet four are at the one-hundred-and-thirty-five-foot level, and then the coax that we're talking about yesterday, there's roughly twelve of those.
And that's just run underground, or how does that connect back to your structure?
If you go back to sheet three, they're little hatched.
Okay, so it goes along that ice.
They're called ice bridges.
Okay, so it's basically a rack.
They hang underneath that.
Okay, gotcha. All right, Nancy?
Expansion of the compound, will it require any earth moving up there?
There may be some need to do one or two things. We may have to cut in a little bit, or fill, one or the other.
Okay.
Because it's getting close to the, it's starting to slope down there.
Okay, and you're probably familiar with that area, and that red sandstone that has been a problem with slips.
There's a foundation that we'll put in that goes down and.
Only for this hundred, you know, couple hundred feet of addition I'm talking about. I'm assuming the tower's okay.
Oh, yeah, the tower, yeah, we're not impacting the tower. This is just for the foundation itself of the building. It goes down to the frost level, and we'll make sure we get, we have adequate support for that.
I guess I'd like you to take a look at the subsurface up there, because we have, Monticello was once a much larger.
It has a history, is what you're trying to say, that.
There's an apartment buildings went down the hill.
Okay.
And it's, it's mostly soil, they think, but, you know, the soil is associated with the rock it decomposed from.
Well, what we probably have, since we ran the structural analysis on the tower and the code requires that you investigate the foundation of the tower, we should have the geotechnical report.
Mm-hmm.
When they drilled for the tower itself, so that should give us a composition of the soil in that area.
And things around here change in very short order, so, you know, you could be totally outside, but, I mean, in turn, because of the slope, because of what's eroded away in terms of the rocks, so.
Right.
I guess that if I were doing it and putting money into it, I would go the extra mile and get it checked.
Yes, like I said.
I mean, I just think it's too much money, even for the, just the add-ons that you're putting in.
Sure.
Or a house, I do.
No, that's, the units are a self-contained, state-approved equipment shelter, and they come in on a flatbed, so they're all one piece to begin with, and then the concrete slab is there mainly to keep.
Is just slab on grade?
East Bayland.
Is it a foundation or a slab?
It'll go down to frost depth.
Okay, dude.
Three feet, you may be fine.
All right.
And deeper or wider, if necessary, if the ground conditions or the soil conditions show that it's a soft soil or something of that nature, then we can take them down, we can put pilings in.
Right.
All sorts of things to make sure it's going to try to stabilize, but that.
It may not be a problem.
Right, but most of your weight's really the slab itself, and you're just anchoring the shelter down on here, so.
Mainly to keep it level.
Yeah.
And disruption, Nicholas. It could be disruption, too.
Oh, disruption, so that's a good point.
I think the reason why we're having this discussion is that the Monticello Village was larger, and because it slipped down a hill, historically, it's actually why we have hillside ordinances in our code, just because this was, this is, this is the one where everybody learned that you don't just slap it up on the side of a hill.
You check it out.
Okay. It makes interesting reading, probably from an engineer point of view, of what not to do, but that's why Nancy's talking about her concern on this.
I also think if you drive along the bypass, when it's not full trees, you'll see humming all the way down the hill of that area in front, but it may not affect you even slightly, but it's always wise to check.
We will.
May I ask, I know we passed that ordinance on, it eventually became law process.
Process, from what I'm reading here, I was looking at what you were discussing, is that since it does not require a public hearing, since it's a co-location, it looks like they then will fill out a new application in my office in the process of designing right now. We've about got it done, and we've got a few more blocks that I'd like to add to it, and then we'll get that to the applicants, let them fill it out, get it back in, and from what I see, it looks like after the application, let's see, they do come back through here one more time, after the public hearing, and which isn't necessary, and after formally considering the application, the city may approve, approve with conditions, or deny a special use permit. This decision shall be in writing and shall be supported by substantial evidence contained in a written record. The burden of proof for the granting of a permit shall always be upon the applicant, so.
When you say the city, I don't know why that would have to come back to the plan.
The city may approve, I don't know if it means here, or if it means.
The planning commission.
I think that means the planning commission.
Because it did say the plan, it's supposed to come back to.
I, I think so.
Yeah, I would, yes.
The planning commission is.
Now, what it doesn't say, and Paul and I were just talking, whether the applicants need a return or not, we don't know, since they're here today, everything's.
I mean, I think if it's, you know, again, it's up to you, it's one of those things, I mentioned this before when you guys weren't here, if you're here, it can speed the process immeasurably. I mean, if everything comes out what we expect, yeah, it'd probably get approved, but if there is something a little bit slightly askew to what we were expecting, you know, and we're not comfortable approving it at that time, it can just mean you, we got to get more information back from you, and some of that can just be, if you're here, it can just be taken care of quickly. So, I mean, if you're confident in it, you know, by all means, you should attend, and.
One or both of us should be back.
And that's, you know, it's usually just getting a voice, and as you may have seen in the case before, you know, that was not how we preferred it, there was conversation that occurred, and likely that's going to be corrected, and the approval was given, so that's kind of how it works. Any other comments or questions?
Might be first on the agenda next time.
Let's hope so.
Yeah, I'll have to finalize the form, so you can fill it out, but we'll get that.
Just make sure it doesn't say draft when they submit it, and.
I believe that's on the board of appeals when this came through, and I thought they were going to anchor it all the way down to this, the bedrock or whatever, because there was concern at the time, being a residential area and a tower going into Sloughon area. But that was many years ago, as you say, things can change.
I mean, I guess that would mean, once you get that geotechnical report, and, you know, if issues do arise where there's, you know, systemic problems with the tower's foundation, or something along those lines, I mean, then, you know, I guess you're going to have to determine whether you really want to go forward with the project, or if you do, it probably means you're going to have to do improvements to it, so, well, we'll see what happens, I guess.
Yes, I think what I'm going to take a look at a little closer, besides the geotech report, is the structural analysis, we ran on it, see what the rating of the foundations are.
Right.
And also, now that you've made us aware of the sloughing of the hillside in that area in general, I want to take a look at that and see. I don't think it would prohibit us from doing this, just may mean we put in more substantial foundation in that goes a little deeper.
Right.
Lock into some solid soil.
That's exactly why we're here.
That's great.
All right, any other comments, discussion? All right, thank you, we'll look forward to seeing your application. Any other communications? Move on to reports from City Planner and Director of Code Enforcement and Development.
I can go? I just have a few things. To start with, my office has been relocated to the code office at Twenty Coran Drive?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, Twenty-eight Coran Drive, I have a new phone number as well, five-nine-two-three-three-zero-six. So I've been working on that for a considerable amount of my time, just reorganizing everything. However, last week, I did have the opportunity to attend the Ohio statewide floodplain managers' conference in Columbus. I will be, there was a few things that I learned there that I thought possibly we should be looking at for our code, for our flood code, so I'm going to try to do a, I'm not going to try to, but I am going to do a, for my own peace of mind, a review of our current code. I do think there's a few things we should probably add to it, and I'll be making some recommendations to city council on that in the near future. Additionally, I pointed out to the planning commission in the past, FEMA and ODNR have been working together to do an updated flood insurance study and updated flood maps for most of the Honking River floodplain, about a seventeen-mile stretch, including all of the city of Athens and all the way up through Nelsonville. They have been doing data collection in the county in the spring of this year. We are expecting to see the new flood insurance study and maps in spring of 2013. They didn't give me a hard date on that, but they, they said that we will have it next year, which is quicker than I was expecting, actually.
They do this, was it every, like, five or ten years or something?
No, they, well, we received new maps in December of 2009.
That's how, I was thinking.
Those were the first new maps we had since March of 1980.
Oh, so it's sort of an administration change, I guess.
Yeah, no, well, there's been a massive, at FEMA, they, they did, they wanted to update all of the flood maps nationwide, they had a massive updating project that they did. However, they didn't do, because of budget situations, they were not able to get into as much detail as they wanted to with all of these countywide maps throughout the U.S., so they, they made some slight changes to the mapping, and then the new maps are on on ortho photo, so you can, it's easier to kind of-
Right.
-see things, but it's actually not that easy to see on those maps.
And not on the aerial photography of our area and for, and mix it.
And there were a few issues that they noticed in Athens County, there were some, some flooding issues that didn't seem right, at least on the maps up in the Bookdole area and Nelsonville, and then there's also, we've had what at least locally seems to be a new problem with some of the, the codes run, the Richland Avenue area, and there's been a lot of speculation that when the highway interchange was added on the south end, that that changed and added floodwater coming in, new runoff, and so codes run floods more often than it used to.
Right.
So they wanted to evaluate that situation, and probably the university, they thought because the university is such a major component of our community that-
Right.
-there is a worthwhile effort there, so.
Okay.
It's a big project, actually, and we're lucky to, to be getting the detail that they're going to give us.
Right, is it, is it pretty much just led by the ODNR and FEMA, or do you, as the sort of flood management representative for the city, participate, or is it, how's that?
They, they had engineers and surveyors in Athens County in spring that did all kinds of, you know, shooting elevations and doing all kinds of hydrologic studies through the tributaries and in the river. At this point, it's all FEMA's handling everything with their consultant, they're using StanTech or Scant, StanTech as the consulting agency for it, I believe, and so they're handling everything, and at some point FEMA will give the new maps to ODNR and the new study, ODNR will take thirty days to review it, then they'll hand it down to Athens County and give us some time to review it.
Okay.
Get, let the elected officials review it, bring it out to the citizens, and then we'll give them some feedback on it, and then they'll, they'll decide whether they become law or not.
Okay.
So, that's all I have.
I appreciate it. John?
If I may?
Yeah, Paul.
I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I see that the city planner submitted, again, about the Far East Side rezoning, just, and since that time, I've received an email, at least one, from a Far East Side resident asking if we're going to ever take any actions.
In that last meeting, we came to the conclusion that if we didn't have a case on the agenda, that it would be the first priority, so I'd like to stick with that. I mean, I'm open to other suggestions, if people want to either supersede a case or have it in the same time as a case, I don't, I don't mind, I mean, I just, at preference, I guess, would be, it seems like our decisions go pretty long on it to not have a case as well.
I would agree with Nicholas.
I'm just not sure how you plan that, I just, I mean, I'm just-
Well, and then we put out the agenda two weeks ahead of time, and that will know, right, or, I mean, that's the-
So we're waiting for a time where we may have zero case whatsoever.
And we're going to meet at the same time.
Yeah.
I guess I would, just one member suggests that if that's, if that, if you feel that it would take an entire meeting, perhaps we need to schedule an additional meeting just to address the Far East Side request. I just don't know when we'd ever get to it if it was, based on that scenario, that you-
Right.
We could limit it to the R1 and have a special meeting, I think otherwise it gets very complex.
As of right now, I don't think we have any cases coming up in two weeks.
We're on the phone, Tom.
Okay, so that's-
The tower may come back.
Yeah, why don't we put it on, I mean, they have to be in by today anyway, and if we don't have a case, then if some, somebody wants to bring in a case, we just tell them too late, it's two weeks, you have to reply, so let's just put it on the agenda then.
Yeah, you know there's not going to be any Title 41s by today, right?
Right.
Just maybe the wireless.
Madison Heights isn't?
No, they're not ready.
How's the lock split? Mulligan, is that what's going on?
I was told that's being removed.
He's never come in with an application. I mean, that was just a preliminary to see which direction it would go before he spent the money on the surveys.
Right.
I don't think he heard what he wanted to hear.
Okay.
I don't know, I can't really say that, I didn't speak to him, but he has not contacted me since, so.
Okay.
And we'll do it next time.
Yeah, so let's do that next time, definitely, yeah, let's, I mean, really, we can do it, I guess I always say it that way, and then, you know, we've been kind of lax, let's put it that way, that we'll say, let's not put it on the agenda unless we don't have a case, and then we'll give people up till the Friday before we meet, you know, three days before to get their case in, which, I mean, the rule is two weeks, and I think if we just start enforcing that more, we probably can do a better job of scheduling these items, so I'm all for that, Paul.
Thank you.
So, let's, in, with that said, let's be thinking of that as we proceed. So, in other words, when we, after our meeting at the, we get to the communication part of it, we can just discuss and say, if there's no cases, we'll, let's know what we're going to meet with already this two weeks, and that will, Char's job's a lot easier, and she doesn't have to play phone tag with people. All right, all right, John?
All I have is that the, I lost my voice here, Thursday, September 13th and Friday, September 14th, myself, Tyler Craig, our Solid Waste Alert Control Officer, I believe, Ron Lucas, are you going, you may be Paul May.
Of course.
We will be attending the Waste of Wealth Summit, and that is being organized by the Rural Action Appalachia, Ohio Zero Waste Initiative, it's a partner of Keep the Southeast Ohio Beautiful, which we are part of. At the forum, I guess stakeholders and attendees will review the results of a feasibility study that details several different opportunities to improve recycling and waste handling in Athens and Hocking County, so we will be attending that, and I'll let you know what we come up with, anything. And then also, on Wednesday, September 19th, two weeks from today, I won't be here, obviously, but I'll have somebody representing the city at the Fall 2012 Housing Resource Fair that's put on, that future tenants get a chance to explore off-campus housing options by meeting with landlords and off-campus living personnel, and we always like to be attending, attend at that as well to share any information with prospective tenants.
Who puts on that fair?
That is put on by Off Campus Housing, I believe, and then the university.
By, wait, the, the company Off Campus?
No, Residence Life, like-
Oh, Residence.
The Office of Off Campus.
Okay, I see.
But the university, essentially.
Yeah, I got you, no, we should have put our sign ordinance to that date or something. That's been funny. Okay, sorry, joking aside, any other?
And that we have zero cases for the BZI next week, so.
So they're not convening.
They're not convening.
Yeah, it's a good thing the Mill Street, they're going to work out that extra space.
Well, they wouldn't be able to go there next week.
Exactly. All right, any other items, report?
That is it.
Questions? Okay, opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda, any burning question? Okay. Announcements and other business, first off, our next meeting is scheduled for September the 19th at noon.[1779.32]